The PFC zoning board of appeals, if you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That worked well. I muted everybody.
All right, so members of the board, just so you know, I've muted everyone for the pledge, but you'll need to unmute yourselves so that we can hear you and then we'll get to everyone else in turn. All right, Tony D.
Here.
Art Grace.
Yes, sir.
Larry Sloman.
Here.
Christine.
Here.
Okay. Phyllis.
Here.
Diane. Diane, you're muted. I can see you, but you have to unmute.
A minute, okay, unmuted.
Okay.
Here.
Tony Straka.
Here.
And Simona Cohen. Okay, I'm not seeing Simona. Okay. Maybe she'll come in later. Tonight's meeting has been conveyed in accordance with the governor's executive order, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow the municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted at the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on doors of the town hall, as the town's bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the public. We have emailed a copy of the notices to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. With that, let me describe a little bit how the zoning board of appeals works. Each applicant will make their application, they'll present what they want to do, will take questions from the board, will take questions from the public if anyone has any questions or comments. At the end of each of the applications, we may take a break, and then there'll be deliberations. At that part, at that time, the record's been closed for those cases that are closed, and we'll deliberate and come to a decision about whether or not to grant the variance. You can either stay till the end of the meeting to find out whether or not your application has been granted, or if you don't want to wait that long, you can call the zoning administrator tomorrow morning and find out. Okay? And I see Simona has arrived. Okay. So with that, public hearing, number one, Vassar College, there's a request by the applicant to adjourn that till May 10th, so I make that motion that we adjourn. Item number one, Vassar College, 124 Raymond Avenue, until the May 10th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, that motion's carried. It brings us to number two, Stewart Shop. Again, there's a request by the applicant to adjourn to the May 10th meeting, and so I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion's carried. That brings us to number three, White's Marina Small Cell Tower, Verizon Wireless. Is there any from that application here?
Yes, Scott Olson is here. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Olson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, so do you have anything more to add to your application?
You know, I don't have any, there's nothing new since I was here back in February. I think I provided a PowerPoint at that point, and I'm happy to go over and summarize it, but nothing has changed, except that, you know, since that time, you, the board and town did hire Douglas Fishman as a consultant for radio frequency issues. He provided some comments and asked us to address a couple of questions, which we have done, and I believe we've addressed all of his questions, and I don't think there are any outstanding issues from him on this application right now.
Okay. In that case, then I'll turn it over to members of the board. Does any member of the board have any questions? Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony D.
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
You can unmute yourself or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. If you're on the phone, again, you can use star six to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing anyone looking to speak on this.
Okay, I don't hear anything, so in that case, I would move to close the application.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay. So that brings us to number four, Friendly Ford South Road Facilities. Is there someone here from that application?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Rich Cordone with JMC here on behalf of the applicant, South Road Facilities, Friendly Ford. Good evening all, I hope everybody's enjoying the.
Mr. Cohen, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening all, my name is Rich Cordone with JMC. We are the site engineers for South Road Facilities, operating as Friendly Ford on 2250 South Road. Joined tonight by the applicant, Eric Khan, who's the owner and operator of the facility. Since our last meeting, we've, we initially proposed a bit of a higher sign, about 20, 29, almost 30 feet. We've done, the board asked us to look at lowering one of the signs, and we did that. We're coming back to you guys with a sign that matches the existing sign on site with the height of 24 feet and nine and three quarters of an inch versus the 29 footer. That sign's pretty much close to the existing sign that we have on site. There's a couple of other variances that were before the board with. We reviewed the memorandum that was distributed, and we don't have any comments or concerns about that.
All right, and you had an opportunity to review the county's comments? Is that the memorandum you're referring to, or?
Not the county comments, the ZBA, the staff comments.
Okay, very well, but did you get an opportunity to review the county's comments?
The county comments, I haven't received county comments. With regarding the zoning board, I have not. I've received county comments regarding our planning board application.
So let's see if I have those. So I have a March 17th, 2021, report from the County of Dutchess Department of Planning and Development. Are you saying you don't have that?
March 17th. I have, I do have a March, I do not have a March 17th memo.
Well, in essence, it says it has no problems with variances one through four. They say there are matters of local concerns, but they do have some issues with variances five through seven, which are the signs. So number five, you have reduced that somewhat. And number six, that's the freestanding sign with the 50 square feet permitted, and you're proposing 60 square feet. What's the sign, what's the square footage of the current sign?
The square footage of the current sign is, I'm pulling it up right now, it's 12 by five, so it's about the same size. It's 60 square feet as well.
Okay. And then they have the wall sign for each of the business facing a public road shall be permitted at their hundreds, up to 100 square feet, and you're proposing an additional sign of 31 square feet on the southern-facing side of the new addition. So they have a problem with that.
That's correct.
So let me, let me ask you about, well, first of all, do you need time to consider that? Those concerns about the county?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what they, what, have to consider, I don't know what their concerns are about that. I still don't have that memorandum.
So they say that the applicant has not provided justification as to why a freestanding sign of legal dimension would not be visible to pass her by, why one wall sign is insufficient to guide patrons through the site, and why the requested variances aren't necessary, especially given how permissive the town code is regarding signage in next district. Our department strongly discourages excessive and duplicative signage, which contribute to visual clutter and drive confusion, and may open the door to a proliferation of requests by other businesses for additional signage. The car dealership business will be amply identified by the freestanding and wall signage that is allowed per code. As New York state law directs that only the minimum amount of variance be granted, and the applicant has not provided adequate justification for the requested variances, we suggest the signage proposal on site be reduced to conform, conform with the town code. We also note that the applicant requires several variances related to the adjacent residentially zone panel. The board should examine whether screening along the residential lot would negate the adverse effects of granting the requested variances. The reasons stated above, our department recommends that the board deny requested signage variances five through seven, and notes that if we act contrary to their recommendation, we must do it by a majority plus one, and notify for the reasons to differ from their opinion. So do you want time to comment on those things, or are you ready tonight to?
That would have been nice to get a couple of weeks ago. Then we would have been prepared for that.
It's actually mentioned in the staff report, though, too.
Yeah, I think it was referenced in the staff report. It was identified there.
The staff, yeah, we received a staff report this morning, but it wasn't.
All right, well, let me, let me ask you a few questions, and we'll ask some questions, and if you, if you think you need more time to respond to those, you know, certainly add that. But tell me, remind me again why you need a second monument sign, or a second freestanding sign?
It's our understanding under the current zoning code that the applicant is entitled to an additional pylon sign based upon the sign of one dry, one pylon sign per entryway. What the applicant's done is we looked and the dealership, the dealerships, I'm sorry, but the manufacturers have certain sign packages that are pre-designed and kind of preset up, and what they've done is they offered a number of these to us, and what we did is we took the one that kind of fit, close to the character of the existing sign that we have on site that's going to add to this. Basically, what we're trying to do is we are trying to get more cars onto the site. We're trying to make sure that people understand that we're, that the application doesn't just service smaller cars, but that the expansion that we're putting in place to service some of the larger vehicles, we're doing that so that way we can identify those larger vehicles by the commercial Ford signage to let them know on both signs. That's pretty much the reason for it, is to let the, the public know that we're, we're servicing the larger commercial Ford vehicles as opposed to just the smaller cars. The sign along the, on the building on the south side, we're proposing a smaller sign, a 31 square foot sign on the addition, and to be honest, we really didn't feel as though that it was an intrusive sign. We prepared renderings for the board, I'd be happy to pull up again, so you guys can take a peek at those.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to see if you have a rendering of, of all the signs, again, if you can show that to us. Are you able to do that?
Okay. Let's see, not this one. Okay. I'm going to, where's my Zoom link? Sorry, guys, apologize for this, I'm just having a bit of a hiccup with the screen share. Right here, this sign right here, you can see where we have the smaller sign on the building over here, and this is the larger pylon sign, kind of from the view from the south looking north.
That's the proposed, proposed signs?
Yes, the proposed signage, you could see on the back of the addition, there's a smaller Ford Commercial Vehicle Center. Above that pickup in the back, I'm circling it with my pointer, I don't know if you guys can see that.
Okay, and what's this, what's that size?
That's 31 square feet. We're requesting a variance for that sign, too, because it doesn't face a public road.
Okay. And?
The pylon sign you can see over here towards the left of the screen, it's over there on the side.
Okay. And that's going to be the same height as the south sign?
That's, it's within about six inches.
Okay. And do you know, how much of your traffic comes in from the north side?
Just a minute. I, I would have to check with the applicant on that. I believe Mark, the general manager, and Eric are on, and one of those guys will probably be able to answer that, how much traffic comes in from the north side.
Will the lettering will be identical on both freestanding signs?
The lettering on the southernmost sign is basically, it's just says, it's just the Ford oval, whereas on the north side, the one that we're proposing, it's Ford, and then underneath of it, it says Commercial Vehicle Center.
Are you talking about the two pole signs?
Yes.
Is that what we're comparing?
Yes. Yeah, I want to know what, what was different about those two freestanding signs?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. The, the new sign would point out to drivers that were in the commercial business, which is a different line of business that Rich referred to, which is these kind of bigger, more commercial used trucks.
So you're talking about more than pickup trucks, you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we sell pickup trucks, but when people refer to commercial, they're sometimes talking about, you know, the F350s, 450s on up, that are, you know, not typically used for just, you know, leisure and driving, you know?
So help me understand why, what if you just changed the south sign?
Well, because the, the south sign is a big Ford oval sign, which really puts our name out there. Once again, this is kind of announcing that we're in another line of, of business.
And so the purpose of the, the wall sign on the south side is just to, is it just identifying that you have a commercial truck business now?
Yeah, that, that would be kind of the location of the, where the commercial bays would be.
For a showroom?
It's not a showroom, it's just a shop.
So where the customer would take their truck for service?
It's where we would be servicing the, the bigger trucks. We would not, we do not have a customer write-up area there, so the way the, it's designed is they still would, customers still would get written up in the, the main building. We would just be bringing those vehicles to that, to the new building.
All right, so it's just some additional advertising?
That's, that's correct, correct.
Okay. That's all I have this time. Christine?
So the, the proposed pole sign would be at, at the, the other entrance, the, the northern entrance, correct? Or is that an exit?
That's also an entrance, yes.
Okay.
Both, yeah, and it was asked before, by the way, you know, how much, how many people come from the north and the south? I don't really know, I don't think we've ever really done a count on that. I don't know if Mark Burnick or the general manager can comment on that, but I, I don't really have a sense, I don't think we've ever actually done a traffic count on that.
Yeah, Eric, this is Mark, yeah, we, we really haven't done a count on it, but majority of it is, you know, on the north end, north end is, is exit. You know, it's, it's both ways, but majority of traffic on that one is, is exit.
And that's the, that proposed pole sign is approximately the same size as the one on the other entrance? Within six inches, I think you said, right?
That's correct, under the, under the new proposal, and originally, it was about 10 feet taller, and we've come back and reduced it to the same size as the other pole.
That's all, no other questions.
Art?
Excuse me. Two things, the proposed wall sign for your Commercial Vehicle Center, there's really no net gain for the customer, because you said they're going to sign in essentially at your facility where you're doing it now, in the other shop, in the other building, and then your, your people are going to drive the vehicle around to that bay? Or is the customer going to drive over to that bay?
As far as I know, Mark can confirm this, that is a, that is something that we would bring into the bay, not the customer. That's not, the way it's designed currently, it, it would not be where customers would bring their car.
Okay, so for customer awareness, that sign really has no real function? Correct?
Well, once again, it's just more exposure.
You're so far back, you're so far back.
And just indicating, I'm sorry?
You're so far back from the road, do you really think that's going to gain you a lot?
It's certainly far less important than that, the, the pole sign, and I agree with that. The pole sign is really what's important to us in terms of letting people know we're in that, that sector of the business.
Right, so let me ask you this question then, since you brought the pole sign up, that was my next question. Why would you not replace the existing Ford sign with that new pole sign and just have one sign?
Because we don't want people to think we're just in the commercial business, and and the Ford logo is much bigger in the oval sign, so we, we don't, you know, and, and that sign's been there for, for many, many years.
Yeah.
So we, we think, we don't want to hurt ourselves by doing this either, and we think that would, that would hurt ourselves. We're not just a commercial center, we're, we're a Ford retailer who handles all, you know, cars and trucks and light trucks, but hey, we're also handling, we're also commercial center, is what we're trying to tell the world, handling bigger trucks as well and for commercial-type vehicles.
Can I say something?
Sure.
They are in the code allowed to have two, to, the two pole signs, one at each entrance. It's that, the fact that they're exceeding, you know, by 10 feet and six inches in height and 10 feet in.
Right, and we tried to address that by bringing it down, you know, 10 feet from where we previously proposed.
Okay, no more questions, thank you.
Okay. Tony D.
Questions.
You have no questions?
No questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
The Ford sign on the building is, that's facing the south side, that's, is that as necessary if you're going to have the Ford oval on the pole sign at the south entrance?
I would say it's not as necessary. It's, you know, certainly, once again, and what I said previously, the, the much more important sign to us is the, the pole sign at the front, the front of the property.
Okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
And Simona?
No questions.
So actually, I have another question. Why do you need to exceed the allowable height for the north pole sign, north freestanding sign?
These are prefabricated sign packages that are available from the manufacturer that they've already looked at and marketed and approved, and this is kind of what they have, you know, that fits their bill, they provide. So what we did is we took that and we took the sign that fit the closest, they have much larger signs, and we chose to go with the one that's, you know, the smaller one, that's going to come close, and I understand it is still a little bit larger. It is a bit larger, you know, we're asking for a variance of about 10 feet for this, for this face square footage. We're also asking for a variance on the height.
And do they have smaller ones?
They don't, I don't believe they have smaller pylon signs, they have a smaller monument sign that would be placed on the ground.
Is there a significant difference in cost between the two?
I, I, my biggest concern with having a small monument sign on the ground right there is visibility close to the entrance with sightlines. That's why we chose to go with the pylon sign that's higher.
All right. Any board members have any additional questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, is the pole, the pylon portion of the sign also part of it, or is it not possible to bring the, the pylon, the, the pole portion of it and make it shorter so that you don't need the height variance and would only need the area variance?
It's, it's a package deal from the, from the manufacturer. What the manufacturers do is they come out with sign packages that are approved advertising packages that are, that go to the dealerships, and, and this kind of fits the bill of what they have, what their marketing team has come up with.
Okay. Anyone else, or anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this?
Again, if you're on the public, you can raise your hand in Zoom, or just unmute yourself. If you're on a phone, star six to unmute.
Not seeing any. All right, I don't see anyone interested in comment. So for the applicant, do you want time to respond to the county's concerns?
I don't know what kind of response you guys would be looking for from us as far as, you know, county.
Well, we need to, we need to answer the county's, if we were to approve and go against the county recommendations, we need to show why. So there are concerns about, that you have not just demonstrated enough need, so if you wanted to provide, if you wanted time to come up with other arguments, that might be to your advantage.
What I believe we would like to do is we would like to proceed with the other variances at this time, the requested area variances for the impervious area, the setbacks, et cetera, so that we'd at least be able to move forward with the planning board and keep, keep that process rolling. And, you know, we can, we can work on the sign, this, the, the variance for the sign for the next submission. Eric, are you okay with that, or would you rather see what they want to say for the sign moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, listen, I certainly agree, I, we'd like to move forward with the planning board and, and have the four variances considered now. As far as the, the signage, the, the pylon sign and the wall sign, we've given a, a number of arguments on why we need it, and I guess I'm, I would ask a question, do you, do you feel like we need further arguments? Because those are the arguments we have right now to, to go back to DOT, if, or have you go back to DOT. But if you feel like we need to, to further those arguments, we will, we will meet internally and, and discuss that.
Well, I think it's a good idea, you know, we're certainly, I think, items one through four, we can vote on tonight, but I want you to have.
Essentially, one through three.
One through three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, so one through three.
Mr. Chair, it might be helpful for the applicant to hear from some of the board members if they have objections at present to the sign variances that are requested. And if that were the case, the applicant may want to provide, you know, to confirm that there is no smaller sign package. Otherwise, if the, some of the board members have no objection to the current proposals for the, either the pylon sign or the wall sign, that would be helpful information for the board to have. So we might quickly want to ask the board members for any comments they might wanna share at this point prior to the public hearing being closed.
All right. So I, I have a concern about the wall sign. I'm not so sure that they've made their, um, sufficient demonstration that it's necessary.
Two, there's, excuse me, there are two wall signs that I'm concerned about. Um, I think Phyllis brought up the one with the Ford oval, and they said they could live without that, and then the, uh, the proposed new one on the, on the rear building, the commercial vehicle, they, they feel that they can live without that.
Yeah, I think that the wall sign on the south side is the one that they, the one that says "commercial." I don't think they've made it, um, a strong enough.
Right.
Argument for that, but I, I think that the, the oval that you're referring to is the existing freestanding.
Oh, is it? No, no, the one on the wall, on the, on the side of the building.
I don't think they're doing anything with that. I think.
No, but do they need that? If they keep the other two signs?
Yeah, we, we didn't comment on that, uh, that wall sign that you're referring to. Uh, I'm, I'm not really sure, but we, we made no other comments about any other wall sign other than the one that was proposed. Um, we certainly didn't, uh.
I, I think they're talking about the, the southern pole sign.
The pole sign, no.
As an oval. I think, you know, they were comparing that with the one, the new one that they wanted.
I apologize for misunderstanding that one.
I don't blame you.
The walls.
Any other, other board members have any concerns about the wall sign?
Um, this is Phyllis. I would just say that, um, perhaps I asked the question poorly, but Art and I were on the same page with the answer. I really thought, um, that the Ford place had agreed that they could do with both that southern oval as well as the one that talked about the commercial, um, repair place. So.
I believe the oval sign is existing. Is that correct?
Correct. The oval sign is existing?
Yes.
And, um, I don't believe we can get rid of that, um, honestly, because as you're traveling from, uh, south to north along Route, uh, Route nine right there, uh, you don't, i- if you don't have that sign on that building, you're, and they just have it, the sign on the front edge of the road, you're not gonna be able to see, um, you know, until you get right up on it, until you get right up on the building. You really need the sign facing, uh, that southern facing sign so you can identify on the building.
So the zoning board is faced with three sign variances, one wall sign, and then two for the additional pylon, one for it being approximately five feet taller than allowed, and one for it being approximately 10 feet larger than allowed.
Six inches.
Correct.
That's really the only things that we can, we should be talking about.
So would any of the board members care to comment on the pylon sign in any way?
On the, on the new pylon sign, yes.
Correct.
I appreciate that you said that there's a, a signed package that, um, they're, they're trying to adopt, but I, I'd like to see some additional evidence of that, that that's the only alternative that you have, or the smallest alternative you have. Is there a way to get that?
We'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do. We'll put, we'll get, we'll get ahold of a signed package from Ford and we'll forward it to the board.
Wouldn't, can, can I comment?
Sure.
Um, oh, um.
Diane?
Yes.
I, yes, I would, um, be curious to see the lower sign, the sign that's not on a pylon, and see where it would be placed, because obviously if it's at the north side of the actual exit, as opposed to the south side, it, it would, it wouldn't block the view of oncoming traffic. And it may be more visible for what your message is, because if you have two signs at the same height, one after the other, within so few feet, it, I don't know why you think that people would read the fine print on the second sign heading north. Um, so it may be something, it would be nice to see what the other option would be.
Okay. For clarification, the signs are about 200 feet apart from each other is where they would be placed. That's where the two driveways sit. Um, the, the sign up, if you were to put a sign, a ground-mounted sign, um, at that north entrance, we have a couple of problems. We have problems with visibility as you're trying to make a right, um, 'cause that's only, that's only a northbound exit out of that, uh, route, um, out of that entrance, out of that driveway. It's only a northbound. You're not making a southbound out of there. So you really need to, you do need to see coming southbound, so you have a visibility issue. If you were to pull it back farther, then you have an issue where you're not gonna be able to see the sign because you have cars parked in the, in the front of it. So the, a monument, it, it, it's not gonna work in that application for, for those reasons. Um, the signs are a good bit further apart. Another reason to have a sign on the north, northern, uh, driveway is, um, to identify that it's a driveway entrance. As cars are going up there and they, driving up the road and they miss the first entrance to get into the site, they do have that second entrance that is available to them, that they can come into, as opposed to making, uh, illegal U-turns or trying to, uh, get back and go, you know, across the divided highway in another way. That's undesirable.
Yeah, so I don't think the question is whether you're entitled to a sign there. I think we just wanna see different size, um, applications. I think that would help us come to a conclusion, um, to assist you.
So, Mr. Chair, it sounds like when the planning board would, uh, this, sorry, the zoning board would close the public hearing as to items one through three and then leave it open as to the remaining items. That would be the motion at the conclusion of this discussion.
If that's how the applicant wants to proceed?
I, I feel so.
Okay. Then, and that, uh, any other comments from any members of the board or the public? All right, hearing, hearing nothing, then I'll make a motion to close, uh, items one through three on, um, item four, and leave the remaining application open.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that, that carries. Next is.
Thank you all.
Next is item number five, Lakeview Maxi Storage. Is there someone here for that application?
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
I saw Scott Bryant before. Scott, are you there?
Hello?
There we go. All right, yep.
Hello?
Mr. Bryant, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. You wanna describe your application?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm here tonight requesting, uh, to actually amend some, some prior, uh, variances that were granted for this project. Uh, the project consists of four self-storage buildings. Um, looking to make some, uh, dimensional changes to three of them. Um, one is cleaning up some old business. Uh, building number one actually wound up being 92 feet instead of 90 feet. So the original variance, as I understand it, was for 90 feet, and, and the building's actually 92. And then, uh, the, the two buildings yet to be constructed were previously approved to be, um, 96 feet in length, and, uh, like to extend one to 120 feet, uh, and the other one to 128 feet. Uh, the setbacks in the property line, uh, remain unchanged. I'm not getting any closer to the property line in any of these cases. It's just that the buildings are gonna be a little bit longer.
And.
There's a fourth one.
Right. Yeah, a 16 by 24-foot shed?
Oh, yes, and I would like to add a maintenance shed to keep my, you know, landscape and snow removal, et cetera, tools in, yes.
Okay, and you're withdrawing item number five?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions on this, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
Sorry, no questions.
Tony D?
No questions.
Uh, Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
Um, yeah, I believe that when this was originally, um, approved, and it looks like there still are, um, plans for them, that there'll be some kind of foliage between your facility and the residential place, trees, shrubs, something?
Yes, uh, I don't know the exact number of trees that have been planted already about, uh, two or three years ago now. There is a, a double row of evergreen trees between, uh, my piece and the, um, apartment building next door. And as, uh, the project progresses, the remainder of those trees will be planted.
Okay. Thank you. That, I don't have any question, other questions.
Were there any conditions on the original, um, approval for, um?
I don't believe so, no. It was, it was just the extensions.
Okay. All right. Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this?
We could get a letter. I think we will.
Oh, yeah, that's. So this is a letter dated 3/25/21, uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding 16 Creek Road Site Plan Amendment. To whom it may concern, we own and manage Lakeview Arms Senior Apartments, 2 Creek Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, 12601, which is immediately south of the aforementioned project. We are on receipt of the notification for a public hearing regarding the above referenced site plan amendment. Please be advised that we take no exception to the applicant's request to amend the site plan to extend the self-storage facility by adding up to an additional 32 feet to 16-foot units to the easterly end of the existing site plan. Regards, Scott Heaton, Executive Vice President, California Commercial Investment Companies. So that'll be part of the record. Okay?
And, um, anyone else? Say, again, star six if you're on the phone to unmute. Anyone on Zoom, just chime in?
All right, I don't hear, um, any, any comments, and so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? And that carries. That brings us to item number six, uh, at-home retail stores. Uh, the shops at South Hills. Is there anyone here from that?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah. I'm with AGI. Um, I'm representing the applicant at-home retail stores.
Sarah, do you swear, do you swear or, or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
If I could jump in, I'm also, uh, Don Blanton. I'm, uh, Director over the, uh, at-home account for, um, AGI.
Okay, and do you also swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, so what's your application?
Uh, we have, um, a request for variance, three, three separate sign variances here for their new building or for their existing building. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys got the documents, but the first variance is for, um, a sign in excess of 100 square feet on their north elevation. Um, the second one is for an additional wall sign on the north elevation, and the third is for, um, another sign in excess of 100 square feet. Um, for the, for the first, for the first one, it's their main, um, entrance sign. Um, we're asking for an additional 71.32 square feet. Um, and reasoning why we are asking this is mostly to do with, if you, um, Don, can you pull up the map?
Sure.
We're doing teamwork here. So what you're gonna be looking at once it comes on the screen are different visibility points that are looking at the proposed at-home location. Are you guys able to see that?
Yeah, we can see that.
Okay, so their main entrance, um, sign is going to be shown as number two, proposed as number two, the, uh, or number one.
Number one.
Their tagline, sorry, it's been a long day. Their tagline is being proposed as number two, and the side sign there, as you can see, is number three. Um, I wanted to point out on the, all these different visibility points, and this is set back from South Road. Um, if you look at, in the far left-hand corner, uh, on West Main Street approach, there's all that trees, the blocked visibility, they have to come down. Um, any patrons going to there would have to come down there. They don't even know there's an at-home. But if we were to have a slightly larger sign, they would be able to, um, see that there's an at-home in that back left-hand corner. Um, there's another visibility point, too, um, for all three of the variances, one, two, and three, where they would be able to see the at-home signage. Um, another point I wanted to make is that all the other, all the other shops there, um, retail locations, all have their front entrances facing South Road. Um, at-home is the only one that does not have their main entrance facing South Road. So the reasoning why we would want to have that additional square footage for the number one is so they could have visibility coming down from the, um, West Main Approach and South Road, as well as, um, the tagline. They, they also, that is part of their element, the whole at-home, everything.
It's part of their identification.
It's part of their identification. It's their identity, so, um, naturally, we would put that there. Um.
Yeah. Also, um, it's actually not facing any main roads, not facing any roads. It's facing the parking lot and the building next door.
Correct.
Sorry.
No big point. Um, so, as you can see, there's another visibility point, three. Um, there, as you go down this south road, there's, um, they have, they have a lot of blocked visibility with the shrubs and trees, um, that I've, I've all there in red. Um, I don't know if you can see all the way to the right as well, to the right-hand corner of the shopping center. Um, that would, if, for variances one and two, that would give them, um, visibility for anybody approaching there. There's all these different approaches, um, and the variances requesting that additional square footage, um, would really help patrons then, like, be able to find it, not to get confused. Um, and then regarding just the setback that you can see there from South Road, it, it's, it's a very far setback. Um, and we, we figured that, uh, this is the largest size that, you know, within reason, asking for a variance that would be, um, maximum visibility for these patrons. Um, if you go, if you go down this, down South Road, there are multiple other locations with, um, same, pretty much same size signage. I, um, they have one on each side of their buildings, um, and so that is what we're asking for, for at-home.
Um, well, I would point out there are two issues. One is that we have not had a response from the county on your application. And secondly, typically, we request, um, rendering of what you're looking, your application, plus what, um, is allowed in the code, so we can compare what you're asking for, um, with what's allowed in the code to see, um, how much impact, uh, the increase would have. But I, I have to tell you, I'm somewhat confused. The, the one picture that has at-home and then the longer, the longer name, that doesn't look like actually the facade of the building. Am I completely mistaken about that?
Um, which one are you referring to?
Yeah, like that. And my recollection is, are you trying to show that as a linear thing, or is that the, the second gray triangle? See where the blue, the blue box is, where at-home is, and then there's just another triangle thing behind it? Is that, is that a corner? Is that, or, or is that the straight facade? Is that, is that a corner? Is that, or is that the straight facade of the building?
That will be.
That would be a part of their front, front entry house, not a part of the signage.
So are you planning on changing the facade of the, of the building?
Um, that I'm going to direct to.
Yes, this, this is Rob Mote with at-home. I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, we, we, we are permitted to put what we call our house on the, on the front of the building, right where this is showing. So yes, the facade will be changing on the building.
Oh, okay. All right. Because it didn't look like the facade now. I couldn't see where you were putting the second, the home, the, the home superstore sign.
Yeah, we are, we are, we're, we're changing that as well as putting a new entry element onto the building. And the, uh, the sign that we have on this entry element building is, is pretty much right-sized for what we put on. Uh, we have several different versions of what we call our house, and this is one of the smaller ones that we use and proportionate. And then, as Sarah was saying, one of our chief concerns is, you know, seeing that sign from all the way across the parking lot where, um, where, I guess, I think it's Walmart, I can't remember what's over there, as you drive towards the store.
Okay. So.
And then the tag, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead. All right, I'll go ahead. So we'd still like to see a rendering of what's allowed under the code. And if you could, are you able to provide a rendering that, that shows what you would see from the other end of the parking lot, from those different vantage points that you were pointing out?
Do we have something like that, Sarah?
We can put something like that together, yes.
Okay. Because we're gonna have to adjourn this anyway, because we haven't gotten a response from the county. And so I, I think that the board would like to see those other renderings.
Okay. Is there anything besides those vantage points that you guys are looking to see?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
The area that's circled or squared off in light blue, the at-home, is, and looks to me that that's, that the western part of the building. Is that gonna be the main entrance now?
It is.
Okay, so where Kmart used to be down to the right, it tucked into the corner, your main entrance is gonna be more towards Route 9, but facing, but facing north.
Yes. I believe that's facing north.
Yes, it is facing north. And where it says the home decor, superstore, that's gonna be more like, um, you know, showcase windows and such, but not an entrance.
Not an entrance, correct.
Okay. And the version three is gonna be over further to the left, facing east on, uh, that part of the building.
Yes.
This one here. At-home, on the gray area, correct?
That is correct.
I just wanted to make sure I had my, my schematics correct. Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
Yes. Will you have a sign on the existing, this is a pylon sign, this is, existing sign at the bottom of the hill on Route 9? Will you have a at-home placard down there as well?
There, there is a shared multi-tenant monument down there, but the height of that spot for the at-home location, I believe, is around 18 inches high, um, which is, is very low visibility if they did even 12-inch letters. Um, that's the H, that's 12 inches and not the lowercase. So that, we're looking at probably, you know, eight-inch letters for visibility, and that's their only ground visibility. So the building sign is basically their, their main, their main point of visibility, because this, this multi-tenant sign, the panel is very small on there.
Thank you. So I'm, sorry, you, you are gonna use the pylon or you're not?
Um, the plan is, the plan is to use the pylon.
To use it?
There is a panel, yes, that we are.
Okay.
Going to be using.
But you'd be working within the existing pylon?
That's correct. We would not be making any structural changes, anything, just, just a, like a reface to that specific area.
All right. Larry, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
And actually, if you wouldn't mind stopping the screen share while we're at it, so I can just see if there's anybody who raises their hand. It's up at the top, the screen share. Okay, thank you.
All right. And so I don't see or hear any, anyone from the public. So again, I'm gonna ask you if you can provide those renderings. And we should have the response from the county by the next meeting. So I, I'll move to adjourn this to the May 10th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 And any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
So that brings us to item seven, Planet Wings of Poughkeepsie. Is there anyone here from that applicant?
Yes, Brian Watts from Days DeCosa, engineering.
Mr. Watts, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you tell us about your application?
The application is related to variances required for the construction of expansion on the Verizon building located at the corner of Burnett Boulevard and US 44, known as such as Turnpike. This is a, um, it's a long application. It was originally Planet Wings, and the applicant was seeking to take on Verizon as a tenant and offering, and expand the building. In the process of trying to get Verizon onboard and in the building, the addition itself was put off as a separate application with the planning board. And we had gotten the variances required, and in the process of concentrating on getting the Verizon constructed in the Planet Wings, um, the addition was kind of, uh, put on the back burner, for lack of a better term. And now we are back trying to get that completed, and we have to get those original variances back in place, possibly. The variances were for the side yard setbacks, um, immediately to the west and north of the proposal, proposed expansion, and for the lighting, which is, has too many foot candles. More. Nope, that was, that was it. Uh, most of these variances are a result of the limitations of the existing parcel, which is substandard for the, for the zoning with the 100-yard setback. This would become basically unbuildable, just given the shape. Um, and that's, that's about it. This project is, um, trying to get back on the planning board stage and get that final approval signed off on.
All right. And has anything changed in the application from the original?
Uh, no. Um, we did modify the site plans that you have slightly, just to reflect that the Verizon portion is completed. Um, so item, so it's labeled Verizon as opposed to Planet Wings, and items like that.
All right. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
Art? No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
Questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
As we said before, star six if you're on the phone to unmute yourself.
Did this require a referral to the county?
It's required. That's a great question. Um, they probably had one back in the day, but I don't know if it was sent again. Was it sent again?
No.
No? Lisa, what do you think? If it's a reapproval, does it need to go back to the county?
I don't think that, uh, it would have to go back to the county.
I don't think that, uh, it would have to go back to the county.
Okay. Any, anyone from the public?
Anyone from the public?
All right, hearing nothing. Um, I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, that carries.
That carries.
That brings us to. Item eight, Martha Williamson to Waldorf Place.
Thank you, board. Have a good evening.
Could you state your name?
Hello, this is, uh, this is Carl Charter. I'm representing Martha Williamson and, uh, and the pool installer.
Mr. Charter, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Why don't you describe? Do you want to describe the application?
Yeah, we have tight quarters up there to build a above-ground pool for a nice pool, kayak pool with the deck and everything. And, uh, what we're requesting, sir, is for the board to consider us, uh, to move the standard setback from 15 feet on the left side and the back side to 10 feet. Uh, I have 37 feet of, uh, area going from one side to the next, and 15 feet plus 16 for the pool with the deck. There's two feet up in the air. It's not, it's not a regular wood deck. And then I would have a tight quarter of six feet. By, by moving it for us five feet, we're gonna have 11 feet. The folks are gonna have, it's gonna be a better job for them. Plus, in the front, where the fence is, uh, it's recessed. I have to force to move the pool towards the, more towards the back of the yard, and that's why I'm doing the request.
All right. And when we went out there, we saw that there was a shed about in the area where you're gonna put the pool and deck?
The folks, I asked them to move that. I think they're on the phone, and they just told me today that that was moved.
Yeah, we moved it.
So what you moved it to?
On the other side. Other side of the house.
Do you know how far from this side of the house, from the side yard, uh, yard?
50 feet.
About 50 feet.
Okay. And how about the rear lot line?
Rear lot line, I want 10 also.
10? Okay.
Because what happens is that, when I'm, when I'm, when I run up to, towards the front, as you saw, because you were there, she's tight there. And if I go up to, up to that, and they're trying to walk in and go to the right, it's gonna be a little tight. So if I go five feet back, plus what's happening is with the fence and everything, there's nobody in the world that's ever gonna see what we did.
That's, okay.
So I don't think it's gonna hurt, I don't think it's gonna hurt the neighborhood or anything like that.
All right. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Simone?
No questions.
Uh, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
I'm not seeing anyone with a raised hand or anyone trying to unmute themselves.
All right. Hearing and seeing nothing, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item number nine, Robert Kemp, 59 Cardinal Drive.
Actually, hold on.
Is that okay?
You can remember, but I think if you're sitting over there, right?
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Good night.
What's your name?
Lisa Neemek of My Way Home Improvements.
Lisa, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. What do you want to do?
I'm sorry. Am I ready? Am I up?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we are requesting a six-foot variance. If you're looking at the house from the back, it's gonna be on the right side. So it's a right-side variance of six feet. We have 14 feet there now, but apparently the 20 feet is what's required.
Okay. And you have a deck, existing deck, that goes along the side, the, the same side as the house?
Correct.
Okay. You just want to enclose that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're not encroaching anymore on the side yard line than you are now?
Just where it is, is what we're using. That's it.
Okay. Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Anthony S.
Uh, no questions.
Okay. And Simone?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Just give my speech one more time. Oh, there's no one on the phone, so not to worry about that. Um, just anyone need to unmute themselves if they want to comment on this one?
Okay, hearing nothing, seeing nothing, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Uh, next is item number 10, Scott, oh, sorry. Next is item number 10, Scott Jenko, Seventh Schoolhouse Lane. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Scott, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. Want to describe your application?
Uh, we are looking to do an addition on our existing residence. Um, there are two corners that will, uh, need the rear back corner and one of the front corners. Uh, we are looking for approximately, I believe, a 10-foot variance on each side.
Okay. And, um, as I recall, the back of your property is kinda, has, the topography's kinda elevated?
There is a hill in the backyard. That's correct.
Okay. And, um, to the south of yours is the end of the fire district property?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Those are all the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane? Diane?
No questions.
Okay, Tony S.
No questions.
And Simona?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right. Hearing nothing, make a motion to close the public hearing? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item eleven, Dan Dwyer, twenty Stephanie...
Thank you, Board.
You're welcome. Dan Dwyer, twenty-three Stephanie Lane.
How you guys doing, Dan Dwyer here?
Mr. Dwyer, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, want to describe your project?
Yeah, we're looking to build a side addition to our home, it would be a living room addition, and we're gonna need about a nine-foot variance on the western side of the house.
Okay. And... So as I recall, your, your neighbor's pretty close to their side yard lot line, right?
Um, it, it is closer to their side, yeah.
All right, those are the questions I have, Christine?
Okay.
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Uh, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this?
We seem to be losing our public, since we have it on TV so much. Just not seeing anyone.
All right, I don't, I don't see any response, and so therefore I move to close the public hearing on item number eleven.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item twelve.
Thank you, Board.
You're welcome. Six Empire Boulevard. Is there someone here from that application?
I see the gentleman there, you need to unmute yourself, Mr. Giestino?
Uh, Robert Giestino?
Yep.
Mr. Giestino, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, you want to describe your application?
Yes, I'm putting up an above ground pool and I'm asking, requiring a nine-foot variance off my fence line.
So, you submitted some drawings and we took a look at the property, so there's a, a blue thing on the ground, is that about where you want to put the pool?
Exactly, yeah.
Was there a pool there prior?
It was just a up and down, just a collapsible, like three, you know, three feet high, it was, we put it away, but we haven't had it in a while.
Okay. And is the fence, is that the property line?
Yes.
So you need a nine-foot variance. And I'm sorry, how big is the pool?
It's a fifteen wide, round and fifty-two up, you know, wall.
Oh, height?
Yes, height.
Fifty-two inches, oh, okay, all right. Will you have a deck or some other thing around it?
No, no.
Okay, and the steps that lead into the property behind your house?
Yes, that goes into a playground.
Is that yours?
No, it's, we're in a homeowner's association.
Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
The pool can't be moved back toward the garage door to get more than six feet from the fence line, or the rear lot, question?
Well, well, everything would be away from, that's, that's our back room, and if I put it in the middle of the yard, we really don't have much of a big yard, so in that corner, it would be tucked away and it just stays away, you know, we have a retainer wall with the fence line, so it's just suitable, you know, a little, if I have to go in a little further into the yard, possible.
Thank you.
How big is the, that blue tarp thing that's down there now, how, how big is that?
That, that is thirteen, we had, prior was like a thirteen wide, round, thirteen round.
Okay, Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane? Did you say no questions, Diane?
No, no questions.
Okay, sorry. And Tony S.
No questions.
And Simona?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Not seeing anybody?
All right, not seeing or hearing anyone, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item thirteen, Ferrari...
Right, thank you.
Okay. Ferrari and Sons, one ninety-five Van Wagner Road.
Good evening, folks, Jay Deising with Mori Architects.
Mr. Deising, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, you want to describe your application?
Uh, sure, I'll just share my screen and show you our plan. So Ferrari and Sons recently purchased one ninety-five Van Wagner Road, which is right at the Tucker Road, Tucker Drive intersection on Van Wagner, they're looking, they've occupied the building and we're looking to put an addition on the front, and also a roof canopy on the rear, you can see the existing site plan here, or site conditions, it's an existing one-story building, about two thousand square feet on a one-half acre parcel, this is our proposed site plan, so we're gonna put a small two hundred and forty square foot addition on the front of the building, the left side of the building is currently some office space and the right side is garage bays, so this, this front addition would be just an expansion of the office, and then we're proposing a roof canopy in the back, about twelve feet deep, that would be for outdoor tool or material storage, the addition in the front is aligned with the side of the existing building, and that's about fourteen feet eleven inches from the left side property line, which is fifty feet is what would be required there by the current code, and then the same for the rear addition, is that same fourteen feet eleven inches aligning it with the side of the building. And then the rear yard setback we're also encroaching on, it's about twenty-eight feet from the back property line where fifty feet is required, and you can see our floor plan here with the front addition, which is just some office space and that rear canopy, this is the existing front facade of the building, the three garage bays on the right and then the office space on the left, there's a little addition there now that we're proposing to remove, and then the whole building is gonna get a facelift with a reverse gable for that entrance office addition, new mansard roof to cover the flat roof in the front, and some stone veneer and hardy plank siding, and you can see the material samples there. So that's a basic overview, and I think, you know, we're certainly gonna improve the overall appearance of the site with the architectural improvements and landscaping and paving we're proposing, so certainly look forward to any questions you might have.
I have a question for Lisa, the agenda list, listed as looking for a variance, it says, seeking to construct an addition to the front of the building to be located fourteen feet eleven inches from the front lot line, it's actually supposed to be the side lot line, which is clear from your denial, I'm just wondering if it, if it matters how it was posted, how it was advertised, whether it makes any difference?
I think we checked that yesterday, actually, and I'm pretty sure the, the notice was proper.
Okay.
And the agenda was unfortunately had, had the typo, but I don't have it in front of me, but that's what we concluded yesterday, or Friday, I should say.
Okay, and the, the rear canopy, that's already constructed, is there gonna be a pad under that?
Uh, it's not constructed yet, Chairman, but there, there's an existing pad under part of it, but the rest of it will just be gravel.
Okay, all right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
No questions.
Phyllis?
If I could just say, this is a marked improvement, I think it's gonna be a really, it'll add a nice look to Van Wagner Road, when we looked around the back of the building, there were, there was quite a bit of, it looked like old building materials and tires and what are the, do you have plans for those items in the back of your, of your building?
Well, there'll be materials stored back there periodically, Ferrari and Sons is a general contractor, so they'll have things, you know, as jobs progress that might come in and out of there, we're also proposing a privacy fence from the front of the building across to each property line, so you won't really see back there anymore, so that should help to improve the aesthetics.
Okay, I'm just, I'm referring to like there were large, looked like construction vehicle tires and a whole variety of things that maybe were past their prime.
I think if there's things that aren't being used or won't be used, then they'll be gotten rid of accordingly.
Thank you, no further questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Okay, Tony S.
Uh, just a quick comment to, to kinda reinforce what Phyllis was getting at, it, it did kinda look like a bit of a landfill in the back of that building, I'm not sure where your property line ends and where the other one begins, but it, it, it really does look like a dump, and I guess that's the point we're making.
Yeah, I know there were some things that have come down the hill from the back, from the, from the neighboring property, but I think we're gonna, we'll get that all cleaned up.
Okay.
All right, and Simona?
No questions.
All right, and anyone from the public have any comment on this?
There's actually one person on the phone, so just in case you wanted to know, it's star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Now that's it.
All right, I don't see or hear anyone, so in that case I'll move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item fourteen, Crystal Kava.
Hi, yes, this is Alicia Miller, I'm acting as agent for Ms. Kava.
Ms. Miller, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, want to describe this application?
Okay, so, the current vacant lot is approximately fifty feet wide, and this request for variance, for, it, the request is for, to narrow the setbacks by ten feet on each side in order to be able to build at least a small, single-family house on that vacant lot.
Okay, I don't have any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony? Tony, you muted?
Sorry, no questions.
Very good, Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
Well, I do have a question, will that home be owner occupied?
It will.
Okay, thank you, no further questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
Uh, no questions.
Simona?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Hello, hi.
Go ahead, what's your name?
My name's Daniel Malloy, I own the property adjacent to this lot.
Mr. Malloy, do you swear...
On the north side of it, on Innes Avenue.
Hold on, just a second.
Excuse me, one moment, sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, now go ahead.
Hi, so I was just, I, I went on the website, I was curious about how the placement of the home on this property is going to be, you know, because the property is such a thin, narrow piece of property and with the variance, it'll kind of butt up to my property pretty close, and I was curious where the house is gonna be placed, because as you go further back on the property, my property ends at about a hundred and fifty feet deep, this piece of property is like two hundred and fifty-one, I believe, but there's a, an amazing drop-off between, that leads down to the creek, so, I'm just curious how it's gonna, how it's gonna be laid out with such a thin piece of property and then having houses, the house come so close to mine, you know, was the house gonna end up, you know, am I gonna look out my window and look into another house fifteen feet away, it's not quite why I bought this property, and I couldn't tell, I couldn't see anything on the website even though where I went, where it showed the layout of what the proposed, you know, building and where it was gonna go, and I'm curious where the, where the house is being proposed to be placed.
Right now, the application is just for a variance to be able to fit a house within the side yard setback, so I don't know that the applicant has, has plans drawn up for where exactly it's gonna be placed, but there is a front yard setback that the applicant has to abide by.
Okay, all right, well...
Unless the applicant wants to answer that, but...
No, you, you, you basically, that is the answer, there, the plans haven't been drawn up yet, but in order to proceed with any plans, there has to be more than ten feet, which is currently with the current setbacks, the only amount of space available for any type of structure on that narrow strip of land.
Okay, all right, and, and it's, it's not gonna be a rental property, is that, did I understand that correctly?
Right, it will not be a rental property.
Okay, I, I'm just curious, I was, wanted to see how it was gonna go, because, you know, it's gonna be very close to my property line, obviously, and, you know, I was just concerned that someone would build something and then move away and there would be a wagon train of people coming and going into the house, and not having any sides, you know, where they would be parking their cars, and it's a very big wooded lot, which is really very nice to have, so, okay, that, that's all, that kinda answers it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing and seeing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Brings us to item number 15.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 38 Kelsey Road, Bobby Bantam. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Mr. Bantam, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
So you want to describe your application?
Um, what we're looking to do is just try to build a six-foot fence for privacy, because we have children and pets and we're also on two connecting roads that have a bit of traffic, so we just needed something for the kids and privacy.
Okay, so you want to bring it from in front of your house, down to the corner, and then connect with the other, the other existing fence?
That's something that, you know, it was rendered, if it's possible, we're just asking to see what we can actually do. If anything, because I saw, I was home when someone came to visit, but I didn't hear the doorbell. And I was just trying to see, like, what area can we have where we can actually put up the fence?
Okay, well, I'll tell you, you're on a corner lot, so the concern, one of the concerns about the, that the code wants to address is make sure it doesn't interfere with any sightlines. And the application that you make quite clearly would have an impact on, on being able to see Hinckley from Kelsey and Kelsey from Hinckley. So I don't think that it would be a problem, you wanted to bring out, your application indicates that you want to come out towards Kelsey Road and then towards Hinckley Place, right?
Yes, that's, that's what was drawn up.
So tell me this, if you came out from...
I understand the issue of...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if you came out just from the corner of your house, parallel to Kelsey towards Hinckley, that would leave a few feet of front yard between, between the fence and Kelsey Road, and then have, you would be able to fence out all the rest of it. Is that something that you could accommodate, deal with?
Yes, we just, we're just trying to see how much space we can actually have, because I, as you can see, there's a lot of space.
Right.
And as I said, we have young kids and we wanted to have space for them to run and play without, you know, danger of traffic or anything like that.
Okay. All right, Christine?
So just to understand what you just said, Paul, you, you were asking about coming off of the edge instead of coming out to the road, going off of the edge of the house?
Yeah, right from the corner.
Right.
The Kelsey Road corner?
Yep. Going over, okay.
Just from here to there, it's still a front yard, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the same impact on the sightline.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
See, because this way here, there's, you can't see there.
Yep.
They'd have this front yard there, they could, whatever they want to do with that. And this is still, it's still a front yard, but I think it has less of an impact than, than what this, what the applicant wants.
Yeah, it'd be, be on the line of the house too, so I don't think it'd notice that.
Well, it's front yard, because there's Hinckley. Art? Did you see what I meant? Do you see what I meant?
I do now, yes, you want to pull it back off Kelsey, that's number of feet to the edge of the house. As an alternative, it would be a diagonal across the edge, like he's got the other corner, the right-hand corner.
Actually...
There's that on it.
Just straight across.
Right here, you want to go here.
Yeah, just straight like that.
Okay, you could also do this, Paul.
What's that?
You could also do that.
Yeah, you still, you would still have to get the car all the way up to here before you can see.
Yeah, that is a blind, that's a tough one.
Right, it's not a high-speed area?
You'd be surprised, depending what time of day it is, right around the corner.
All right. Any question, any more questions?
I like your idea.
Okay, Tony?
Does he understand what your idea is?
Since I'm not there, were you talking about amending the plans as proposed?
Yes.
And how far off of Kelsey would the fence be?
Well, it would go from the corner of the house. You see where, where it comes from the house towards Kelsey?
Yes.
So rather than that, just straight off that corner towards Hinckley.
Oh, so, so run from the corner of the house, follow the house line directly to Hinckley?
Right.
As opposed to going towards Kelsey and then towards Hinckley?
Right.
Gotcha, and this would improve the sightline, definitely.
Right, that's my big concern.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
So how high is the fence going to be that runs parallel to Kelsey?
You're still looking for a six-foot fence, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and it's going to be like a stockade style of some kind, it's for privacy, you're not going to be able to look through it?
Yes, correct, it'd be, they consider it dog ear, wood material, dog ear style material.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions for me.
Okay, and Simona?
No questions for me.
All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing and seeing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Before you do that, does the applicant understand what you're saying? You didn't really explain it in the beginning.
Okay, I don't...
Just out of curiosity.
Mr. Bantam?
Yes.
All right, so you understand what, what we're all talking about?
Yes, I understood, you're saying from the side of the house.
Right from the corner, from the corner of the house, parallel to Kelsey towards Hinckley.
Yes, I understood.
Okay. So can you draw on that, Lisa, or indicate? And I want, like, painted too, so...
Right, so if, my, the reason I put it up is I'm not entirely clear what you're asking for, so let's, and I don't know, can you see my cursor at this point?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so...
Okay, so... Explain to me, please.
If you put your cursor on the corner of the house where he starts to go towards Kelsey and go straight towards Hinckley.
Where the cursor, he starts to go toward, ah, going, okay, hold on, I don't, let me see if I can change my selection tool.
Yeah, you need to just use the, use the pointer at the top, Lisa. Go to the top toolbar and see the arrow, the pointer, nope, to the left, to the left.
To the left, the arrow of the pointer.
All the way, keep going, there you go, that one, use that one.
Okay.
Now just move.
And you want to go from this part of the house?
Correct.
Why am I doing?
Yeah.
I'm still in the wrong selection, hold on. How about a hand tool, is that better? Nope, that's not helpful. You can tell how much I mark on other people's documents.
Go back to select tool.
Select.
Okay, I'm in select tool, guys, thank you, now what?
Wait, before a bunch of...
Just move the cursor without clicking on anything, just move it so that you're going up and down, so you, to the...
Well, in any event, if I move my cursor, we'll know what we're talking. So you're talking about a fence that goes in line with this line of the house to Hinckley?
Correct. Correct.
Yes.
Right.
So this portion of the property would not be fenced in, are you allowing the fence to go, sorry, all the way to the property line, or are you requiring some setback from the property line?
No, that's, I think the code doesn't comment on that, so...
And that going to the property line does not interfere with any sightlines? Provided that it's pulled back from that corner? Okay, I will stop sharing, thank you.
All right, so...
Oh, there's the annotate button.
All right, so Mr. Bantam, that's your understanding, that's your understanding, right?
Yes, I understand, thank you.
Okay, and that's, you're all right with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? All right, seeing, hearing, nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Then that motion carries. The next is number 16, John Riley, 63 Nassau Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Riley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, you want to describe what you want to do?
I want to replace my current chain link fence with a slightly taller one, I want to bring it up to five feet. My reasons for changing the fence are that the fence is old, decrepit and getting rusty. It's going to, the new fence will be metal and it will be upgraded, a different quality, but also I want it to be higher, taller as a deterrent to deer and also as a deterrent to children, younger people climbing over and sometimes committing little mischievous acts of vandalism. I had a dead deer in my backyard, it was kind of like on the trail. And I've, I've talked to people in the area and they say that, yeah, the little increase in height does deter, particularly with the change of the fence from chain link to more metal fence helps a bit, okay? So that's what I want to do, is to replace the current fence, it's been there for about 40 years, with a new fence, but in the exact same position of the current fence. And the only difference would be the height and the quality of the fence. The neighbors will benefit from it and, and I will benefit from it, because it'd be a more beautified fence than the current fence and they're not, they don't have to pay for it, so it, that's, that's really my proposal.
Okay, and you provided some exhibits with your application, and so I referred to exhibits one through three, that's the fence that you'll be installing?
Yeah, it's the one that's, yeah, that's right, one to three, that's, that's the type, that's almost exactly it, yeah. The only difference would be the color, okay, which would be more complimentary to what I'm trying to do here with the color of my exterior. Okay, but that's about the same height and about the same, same fence, yeah.
Okay, Christine?
No questions.
There'd be no obstruction to views or anything like that, because I'm right on the roadside, there's nothing, nothing's going to impair anyone's view as, who's driving by or anything like that.
Okay, and Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Not seeing anybody, there's one person on the phone, you would use star six to unmute if you're on the phone.
All right, seeing, hearing, nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is item 17, Christine Passarelli, 31 Raker Road.
Yes, hi, how are you guys?
Hi, Ms. Passarelli, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what do you want to do?
So I'm looking to put an above-ground pool in my backyard, which is on a corner lot. And as I was going through that permit process, it was discovered, I just bought the house in 2019 and our six-foot fence, it seems, did not get a permit, so I'm also looking for a variance of 2.5 feet to get that legal and correct.
Okay, and you provided a diagram?
Yes.
That shows where you want to put the pool? And you're on a corner lot, which makes most of this necessary, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
Why can't the pool not go back by the decks? Why can't, why can't it slide back a little bit towards the, towards the deck?
Was there a question? Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yes. The question was, the pool, you can't slide that back toward the deck to get it away from the front yard?
A little bit more, but there's really not a lot of room to play with, but even so, technically, the pool would be very far back from the property line, even on the corner lot.
Okay, thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing and seeing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. And to remind everyone, you can either wait until the end of the meeting, or you can find out tomorrow morning with the zoning administrator. Okay, next is item number 18. Ed Bullinger, 7 Silverland. Bonfinger. Bullanger, 7 Silverland.
I am here, I'm Amanda Valley, I'm representing them.
Okay.
Amanda, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, want to describe your application?
We were applying to legalize the four-foot fence that goes around our pool and it also encloses our front yards. We're applying for the variance of six inches for the height.
Okay, and a four-foot fence is required around the pool?
The four-foot fence is required for around the pool area. So we, we did it to that code, but obviously the, the front yard can only have three and a half feet.
Okay, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Not seeing anybody?
All right, hearing and seeing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is item 19, Anthony Carlini, 10 Flyer Court.
Hi, this is Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design.
Eric, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
What happened?
Well, the house at 10 Flyer Court was recently completed and it wound up being 1.7 feet over the front setback line. Not sure where the error occurred, but... Not sure where the error occurred, but not much we can do now.
Okay.
So we're just looking for a variance for the front yard for one point seven feet.
And is it correct, it's just a portion of the jut out from a garage that impacts the side, the front yard setback?
Yeah, there's a little portion that sticks out a little further than the rest.
Okay. All right, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
You know how to move the house?
Well, I'm thinking about it.
No, I'm good.
All right. Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? All right, hearing and seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, next is item number twelve.
Thank you.
Twenty. Next, item number twenty, Fifteen Locusts Road.
Angela Flesland, homeowner on the call.
Angela, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, you want to describe your application?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm seeking a variance this evening to replace my existing garage, built long before town zoning codes, with a new garage. The new garage will be four feet wider and two feet deeper, but will not encroach on the current setbacks. It's necessary to make the garage slightly larger for functionality. We've spoken with our neighbors whose property this borders, and they're in full support. During your site visit on Saturday, Mr. Chairman, you asked about water runoff. At your suggestion, we've researched rain barrels and are in favor of this approach.
Okay. And you want to just describe the topography of the, of the yard just a little bit, so the record's clear in that regard?
The garage is in the corner of the lot.
And there's a retaining wall behind it?
Um, there's a retaining wall to the side that would be amended during construction.
Okay, and we also discussed about runoff, so you're going to put gutters on the, on the garage?
That is correct.
Okay. Then those are all questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Tony S.?
No questions.
Simona?
No questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Just since it's the last time, if you're on a cell phone, star six to unmute yourself.
Hearing and seeing nothing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. I would move to take a five-minute break. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor signify by aye. Um, it's, all right, it's seven fifty-five, we'll come back in at eight o'clock. All right, seeing, hearing, nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. I would move to take a five-minute break. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor signify by aye. Um, it's, all right, it's seven fifty-five, we'll come back in at eight o'clock.
All right, we're back in session. And so, let's see. We can do item number three. Is anyone here from White's Marina?
I see Scott Olson's still on Attorney's Office.
He's muted.
Yeah.
All right, what? Do you think he's really there?
I don't know. Why don't we just, we have everything set to...
All right, so we're back in session. Item three, White's Hudson River, White's Hudson River, 15 Point Street, regarding a cell issue, a use variance from section 21018 to allow installation of an unmanned wireless communications facility on an existing structure in the RNH District where the specific use or similar use is not permitted. This is a use variance, but because it's a public utility, there's a different analysis. It is an unlisted action, and so I would move that. The ZBA act as a lead agency and, based upon a short EAF, ask the Board adopt a resolution of non-significance in this matter.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any objections? Then that carries. Also, this is located in the Coastal Zone One Overlay District. The ZBA was required to do a coastal consistency review and statement of compliance with the LWRP. To facilitate this, the applicant was required to. It did submit a coastal assessment form, and the information contained therein was analyzed by the Board, and no concerns were raised, such that the Board finds that the proposed action is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program, and... So I would move that.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that carries. So any discussion on the application? Anyone have any concerns? The standard requires a number of things. I believe that the applicant and our expert addressed all those issues, and there is a resolution that's prepared, accepting this and granting the use variance. Does anybody have any concerns with it?
Good.
All right, then I would move that we accept or we grant the variance consistent with the proposed resolution.
Second.
Are you looking at me? I don't know. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Did I miss anything, Lisa?
No, all good. Thank you.
No, thank you. Well, Scott Olson's still muted. Next is number four, Friendly Ford.
Just on ones, one through three.
Right. So...
You can still use the staff report, because the other items were...
Okay. Christine, do you mind doing a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance, set forth in item number four, items one, two, and three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by Board members. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings set forth in the staff report. Again, items one through three.
Second. All right, any discussion about this? Diane, did you have something?
No.
Okay. All right. Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries for items one through three on application four. Next is item number five, 16 Creek Road.
On this one, we with, number five was withdrawn, so it's just variances one through four.
And this is an unlisted action, so I move that the town, the ZBA be lead agency, and based upon a short EAF, find that there's no significant environmental action.
There's actually a neg deck.
Oh, so there is. Okay.
Yep.
So based upon, I accept a negative declaration. We had to second, we had to move that?
Yes.
Second. So I moved to accept a neg deck for determination of non-significance.
You seconded it?
You seconded it? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that passes. Art, do you mind doing a motion?
Not at all, nope. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance, set forth in item five. And as for items one through four, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by Board members, and the staff report. We did have a staff report.
Yes.
Approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is item six, that was adjourned until May 10th. Next is item seven, Planet Wings. 66 Duchess Turnpike. I move that we grant the application based on item seven, as there's been no changes since the last time it was approved, and so I don't think there's any reason to disturb it now. There is a staff report, and so...
It's a staff report and a resolution from 2018. So basically, we would just continue that.
So I make that motion.
Second.
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 Any discussion?
I, before we proceed, Mike, is this coordinated with the planning board, and they've acted on lead agency? Or do we need to do a neg deck here?
It's a type-two action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have it on the agenda, it's unlisted.
Thank goodness I had that answer.
Next is item eight.
Wait, we didn't vote.
Oh. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Who seconded it?
It was a tie.
I think, yeah, I think Art did. No? Next is number eight. Martha Williamson to Waldorf Place. So this is an application for a pool and deck to locate 10 feet from the sideline, requiring a five-foot variance for both the side and rear. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. There are nearby properties with above and in-ground pools. The rear yard is fenced, and the location of the pool will have no impact on nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Based upon the size of the lot and placement of the buildings, no other method is feasible to accomplish the applicant's plan. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but not as related to the property, and whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions with this. This is self-created, but that's not a reason to deny that, and I would offer those findings.
Move.
Tony, do you mind doing a motion?
Sure. I move to approve, I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in number eight. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair. And so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is Robert Kemp, 59 Cardinal Drive. This is a request for a variance for a side yard setback for a construction of addition to be located 14 feet from the sideline, requiring a variance of six feet. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and and the granting actually would probably reduce any impact on the neighbors, as it's enclosing a deck. There's no other method for the applicant to use to achieve the desired result. And whether it's substantial, it's mathematically, but since there's no actual change in the side yard setback, it actually has no impact, and there are no physical or environmental conditions with this. And although this is self-created, it's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings.
Second.
All right, and Larry, do you mind doing a motion?
Sure. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by Board members, and the findings of Chair.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this? All right, then, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next is item 10. Scott Jenko, Seven Schoolhouse Lane. This is a request for a variance to prepare in addition to the house to be coded, located 10 feet from each side yard, requiring a side yard variance of 10 feet for each side yard. I would make, offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. No undesirable changes on the neighborhood or nearby properties based upon the situation of the firehouse on one side and the topography on the other side. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Based upon the unique topography and size of the lot, no other method is feasible. Whether requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but based upon the size and layout of the lot, it's not substantial. And whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this application. And although this matter, the difficulty was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and so I would offer those findings. Phyllis, do you mind doing the next motion, that motion?
Not at all. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 10. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and the result of site visit by Board members. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And on the next one, item 11, I have a question for either Kristy or Lisa. The grid number in the agenda was incorrect. Does that in any way invalidate the application?
No, I don't think anybody would show up or not show up based upon a grid number. For the public hearing purposes, so.
All right. Item 11 is a variance for a side yard setback to permit a construction of addition to be located 11 feet from the side lot line, requiring a variance of nine feet. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and and in fact, the neighbor's house encroaches on the side lot line, I think probably more than this one does. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Based upon the size of the lot, no other way to, there's no other way to achieve the desired result. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but based upon the current house placement on this lot, it's minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this project. And while the difficulty is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and so I would offer those findings. Diane, do you mind doing this motion?
No problem. It's motion to approve an area variance request. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 11. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by the Board members. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair. So move.
Is there a second? Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is item 12. Although it's listed as an existing above-ground swimming pool, there's actually, there's no pool there right now. So this is a request to locate an above-ground pool, six feet from the west lot line, where 15 feet is required, requiring a variance of nine feet. No, I did not do. So, I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. There are other pools in this homeowner's association, and so I don't believe it'll have any change in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, it's replacing a pool that was there. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Based upon the size of the lot and the position of the stuff in the backyard, there's no other way to accommodate this application. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's mathematically so, but it's, but based upon the current placement of the house, the retaining wall, and the other topography, it has a minimal impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this project. And while this application is, of course, self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application, and therefore, I would offer those findings. Tony S., do you mind doing the next, that motion?
Actually, Mr. Chair, since you have seven Board members, I think we have seven Board members, I don't think you have the ability to have an alternate.
That's correct, okay, you're right.
Sorry, Tony.
All right, Christine.
I'll live with it, it's okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I, I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 12. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by Board members. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one?
No.
All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is item 13, 195 Van Wagner Road. This is a request for variance for a side lot variance of 35 feet, one inch for an addition in the front, and excuse me, 22 feet, four inches for a roof canopy in the rear.
Get a break, there's a staff report.
There is a staff report, so. All right, do you mind doing this motion? I point out that the county thought it was a matter of local concern.
I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance, set forth in item 13.
13.
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by Board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth by the Chair. And there are no...
No, actually, there was a staff report.
Staff report, that was close. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is item number 14. Innis Avenue. This is an application to have two 10-foot side yard setback variances for a proposed new dwelling. So I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. There are two, at least two undeveloped lots in that area, the change will not be undesirable. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Based upon the size, width of the lot, it's only 50 feet. There's no way to build a house without a variance. There's no other method to achieve desired result. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but based upon the width of the lot, it's minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this project. And while the matter is self-created, that's not a reason to deny the variance. And I would offer those findings. And... I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 14. The decision is based upon a review of the applicant, application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits, and my findings.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, then that carries seven zero. Next is item 15. This is Bobby Bantam, 38 Kelsey Road. This is an application for a fence more than three and a half feet in height in a, in a front yard. Okay, so he wants a six-foot fence, requiring a two-and-a-half-foot height variance. As discussed, the application is modified to reflect that rather than the applicant's application, it's modified to indicate that the fence would go north, north from the northwest corner of the house towards Hinckley Place. It would still allow a six-foot fence, and so granting a two-and-a-half-foot variance. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. It should not make any change in the character of the neighborhood or affect any nearby properties. But the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. There's, it's a corner lot, and there's no way for him to have a fence of six feet without an area variance. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically perhaps, but only in the fact that it's a corner lot. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Based upon the amendment to the application, eliminating that sightline barrier, I think that reduces, removes any physical or environmental condition that this project had. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, which are not necessarily to include the granting of the area variance. This is quite clearly self-created, but that's not a reason to deny that. And I would offer those findings.
Simone.
Tony, am I doing the next one?
I'd be pleased. I move that the Board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 14.
I think it's 15, actually.
No, I'm sorry, 15?
15.
I'm sorry, which one, we're 16?
15?
I'm sorry. Item number 15. The decision is based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by the Board members. In approving this variance, the Board adopts the findings as set forth and amended by the Chair. That's it.
And Lisa, that's sufficient to satisfy what we want to do?
You mean to memorialize the change to the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is number 16, 63 Nassau Road. This is an application for a five-foot fence in the front yard where it's limited to three and a half feet, requiring a variance of one and a half feet. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be made produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. This is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, and it will have no impact on nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance, there's no other way to achieve the desired result without an area variance. Whether requested variance is substantial, mathematically not particularly, and based upon the applicant's proposed fencing, it actually won't be substantial at all. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental impacts with this project. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that is not the, not any reason to deny the application. And I offer those findings. Larry, do you mind making this one?
It's sixteen, right?
Correct.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number sixteen. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, the determinations of the chair.
And I would offer just a condition that the applicant's fence, um, corresponds to exhibits one through three in his application.
That be a motion?
I don't know, I think just, Tony, if you just...
No, it's a, it's a friendly amendment, so as long as Larry accepts it, then you just need a second.
Larry, do you accept my friendly amendment?
So moved.
Second.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed to this application? Then that carries seven zero. Next is number seventeen, Christine Passarelli, thirty-one Raker Road. There are two variances here, one for a pool in a, in a front yard, and the other one for a fence, an existing fence which exceeds three and a half feet. So the applicant has, um, requires a variance of two and a half feet. I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. This is consistent with other properties in the neighborhood, there's no nearby, near, there's no impact on any nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Based upon the unique situation of the property, uh, variance is required, this is a, a corner lot, um, and, the, based upon the topography of that lot, uh, there's not a lot of places to, um, to put the pool. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, uh, it is in the sense that pools are prohibited in the front yard, but as this is a corner lot and, and, um, and under and other other situations that'd be considered a backyard, uh, it's not substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this project. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, it certainly was, that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would ma- offer those. Phyllis, do you mind making this motion?
Yes. Uh, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seventeen. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that's set forth by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All right, so all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Next is number eighteen. This is Ed Bolinger, Seven Silver Lane, uh, with Amanda Valley. This is a request to legalize, um, a four-foot fence in the front yard requiring a variance of six inches. I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. This is the end of Aden End Street, there's no changes in the character of the neighborhood or impact on nearby, nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, uh, the the pool requires a four-foot fence, and the situation of the property requires, uh, some invasion of the front yard. Whether this requested area variance is substantial, not either mathematically or otherwise, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact or physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or, um, district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this project. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's, uh, not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Uh, Diane, do you mind making this motion?
I move that the board approves the request for an area variance set forth in item eighteen. Um, this decision's based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries, seven zero. Next is item nineteen, Anthony Carlini, Ten Flyer Court. This is an application to legalize the construction of a single-family home having a front yard setback of two, twenty-eight point three feet, or thirty feet is required, requiring a variance of one point seven feet. Christine, do you mind doing this? Uh, I would offer, I think the, um, the applicant's findings would suffice, um, for findings on this one.
Okay.
So if you don't mind making that motion.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nineteen. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings, uh, set forth in the application. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All right, then, then, uh, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number twenty, Angela Flechland, fifteen Locust Grove, Locust Road, sorry. The applicant is seeking to replace an existing detached garage with a new garage to be located one point nine feet from the side lot line, and two point eight feet from the rear lot line, where ten feet is required for each, uh, requiring variances of eight point one feet and seven point two feet, respectively. So let me make, let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Uh, this replaces an existing, uh, garage, and will have no, uh, impact on the character of the neighborhood or to the nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon this lot, there's no other where, no other place, uh, to put the garage that would not require a variance. Whether that requested area variance is substantial, mathematically so, but since this is replacing, uh, a, an existing gar- garage which has fallen into disrepair, but has been there for years and years and years, uh, in that sense, it's not substantial. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, um, based upon the applicant's consideration of using rain barrels and other matters to deal with rainwater, there will be no environmental or physical impacts on the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And so I would offer those findings. Are you up? Do you mind doing this?
Yep.
Okay, I move that the board approve the requests set forth, um, excuse me, start over.
Twenty.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance, set forth in item twenty. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members, and the chairman's findings. Approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that was set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one?
Nope.
All right, then, uh, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries seven zero. Um, that brings us to the end of the items, there is, um, a lead agency request from the planning board, uh, regarding the Raymond Avenue School redevelopment. Amended site plan and subdivision applications, the applicant is proposing a second amendment to their site plan and subdivision approvals to, among other things, permit the Raymond Avenue School building to remain and be repurposed. So I would make a motion to, um, have, uh, the planning board be the lead agency in, in that proposal.
Second.
Second.
Any, any concerns or discussions? Then all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to that? Okay, then that passes seven zero. Okay, I, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda for tonight. I want to thank everyone, um, and, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. See you next month.